Good evening, everyone. I call the September 26, 2022 meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. And as a reminder to everyone attending, if you could please address and be recognized as Chair by the Chair before speaking, that would be greatly appreciated. You know, before going to the first item on the agenda, you know, we all live in this community. We all have, probably most all of us been touched by the events of Friday night at the high school. I have two kids that attended the high school and that were at the game. And I think we've all been kind of shaken from those events. And I think we'll all, as a community, get through this. And I'm not one to make many public statements about many types of things like this, but I think, you know, it should be recognized that, you know, we're all thinking about this throughout the day. I didn't even open up the packet until this afternoon to deal with, you know, the whole mental thought process of what happened on Friday. The first thing I would like to talk about is, now, just go back to the first item on the agenda, is approval of the August 22, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair. So moved.
Do we have any discussion about the minutes?
Second?
Oh, yeah, we do need a second.
I second that.
Okay. The next thing will be, do we have any discussion on the minutes? If we don't have any discussion, why don't we go straight to a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Approval of the minutes passes. We will now have our open forum for an opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission for items not on the agenda. If you wish to testify at the open forum, public hearing, at the open forum, the call-in number for tonight's meeting is 415-655-0001, and the meeting ID is 2450-928-1988 with the passcode of 1234. If you are here in person, please sign in at the podium. If you are jointly, joining remotely via phone, please raise your hand, and you'll be unmuted by staff when it is your turn to speak. Please state your name and address and the organization you represent. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments, or 10 minutes of speaking as a representative of a group. Were there any emails or voice messages that came in prior? Do we have any callers? Do we have anybody that would like to speak at the open forum? If you could please move to the podium and sign in, state your name and address for the record.
This is specific, not to the particular agenda of tonight, but for agendas that have been on many city council meetings in the past, and it is also relevant to the one more agenda that's coming up tonight. Once again, approvals are upon the agenda for construction of multi-story structures, which are a pox upon the Richfield landscape. I object strenuously to the use of public dollars to buttress the endeavors of conglomerate interests, which are acquiring land which will be sold to absentee landlords, not to Richfield residents, and the landlord most likely be held after this by people who don't reside in Richfield and who have no loyalty to Richfield in particular. Structures, the once deemed creme de la creme apartment buildings in Edina are today overrun with bedbugs, roaches, and unhappy tenants who have no responsible person to whom they can turn for help. I did not and do not want my tax dollars to be given to conglomerate financial interests who take the money and run and cannot be called upon to support the city nor to support its residents. City Council does not represent me when federal relief dollars are routed to the city by the government, by the federal government, and when these leaders choose to spend COVID-19 relief dollars upon a swimming pool splash pad and for self-serving wage study and for a $10,000 mural, oh, it's a $25,000 mural, but $10,000 of my tax dollars went, not my tax dollars, those were supposed to be sent to the people who were suffering, to the businesses who are suffering, to the individuals who are suffering, to the homelessness, to the poor. Where do those tax dollars go to a swimming pool? I don't think those people are really, have my interest and have the best interest of our community at heart, and I don't want to see them splashing up any more multi-story buildings and then taking the money and going. I'm not saying the city council is taking the money, but they're certainly helping a lot of other folk to take the money and run.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak at the open forum? At this time, I will now close the open forum. Is there anyone that called in?
Chair, there was an email that was received just now.
Okay.
And it, yeah, so it just says, "Public comment," and then it says, colon, "The city needs to stop serving the globalists by authorizing new developments and taxes and instead investigate the massive fraud in the city that stole the election from Trump." A Richfield citizen. Signed, a Richfield citizen.
Thank you. Do we have any other final callers or emails? All right. At this time, the next thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move approval. And just a point of clarification, it's helpful if we say our names before we make a motion. Okay, so Commissioner Sturza, I move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yeah, Commissioner Caneley seconds. Approval of the minutes.
Any discussion on the current agenda? All right, at this time, all in favor for approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Approval of the agenda passes. All right, the next thing we have on the agenda is our first public hearing. We have a public hearing to consider preliminary plat and final plat in order to subdivide one lot into town, an amendment to a planned unit development to accommodate minor modifications triggered by the proposed new lot line, and vacation of existing drainage and utility easements to be rededicated with the proposal plat at 664th Street West. Staff, do we have a report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The Richland Riley apartment buildings are located at the northeast corner of 64th Street and Lindale Avenue. The project was approved by the city in the year 2000, and construction was completed earlier this year. The developer, North Bay Companies, now has a three-part request before us. First is a preliminary and final plat, as you mentioned, to subdivide the property into two lots. This will allow the Richland and Riley, which are two different apartment buildings, to be separated so that they can be refinanced separately. The second part of the request is an amendment to the existing planned unit development, or to accommodate minor modifications that are triggered by this new lot line being drawn in between the two properties. The applicant will be executing a declaration of easements, which would provide for cross-access and cross-maintenance between these two lots, so they'll still continue to function as one property. And then the third part of the request is to vacate the existing drainage and utility easement, which will then be rededicated by the new preliminary and final plat. And this last part of the request is not a public hearing, but since it kind of, they all go together in, through the process, to the city council, so it's, it's, it's mentioned herein. I think it's important to note that there are no physical changes being made to the site. This entire proposal is completely administrative in nature. The flexibility that was granted with the original approval was very minor, and the flexibility of being requested by the applicant herein to separate these two parcels is still relatively minor, and staff finds that it meets all the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, and therefore recommends approval. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff? And as a reminder, we'll also be able to ask additional questions of staff after the public hearing.
Commissioner Hui, I'm curious what the implications of this. I understand that, for now, you know, ownership of the two parcels will remain the same, but what would happen in the future if someone purchases one of the parcels and then redevelops the use of that? There's things like the easements, like how long do those easements last, specifically with the parking lots, like the lot line runs through several parking spaces? And then the drainage situation, if that was redeveloped, like how would we, how would these exceptions that work now in the current configuration be impacted if, with a sale and a redevelopment in the future, potentially?
Chair and Commissioner Hui, that's a great question. The agreements, they are, the two properties are required to continue to operate as one property. The agreement is not perpetual forever between the cross-access and cross-maintenance, but the city is party to it. And if they were to ever, like, let's say, one of the two properties sold, and there were different owners, you know, 20 years from now, and they wanted to uncouple, they would have to come back for city approvals, they would have to notify us if they were to terminate these agreements, and that notification to us would trigger them coming back through the process to getting kind of reapprovals that they might need to do whatever it is that they're wanting to do in the future. There is a mechanism there for that.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So if, say, they want to tear one of the buildings down in 20, 30 years and redevelop it, they would have to get brand-new approvals for all of that? Nothing would be, you know, grandfathered in from this?
That's correct, yeah. That would be a complete redevelopment, and then everything starts over.
Okay, thank you.
My question goes to the original property line. If we, I think I was on the Planning Commission when this originally came through for approval in 2020, and the original property line was further over for the existing apartment building that was saved, the one on the end. Why not go back to that original property line?
My understanding, Chair Rudolph, is that the applicant, who's the developer, wanted to make the Richland parcel, which is the western parcel, as large as it could possibly be legally, because it is the smaller of the two properties. So they drew the line as far to the east as allowable by rules and regulations of the code.
What would, when we, if we would separate these plots into two separate, this plot into two separate plots, for them to have the ability to?
Refinance separately. Theoretically, they could immediately, if they wanted, sell one of the units. Would that be correct?
Chair Commissioners, they could sell one of the two buildings separately. The applicant is here this evening and could maybe speak to their future intentions for the property?
I would like, any other questions, or I would like to hear from the applicant? Oh, actually, sorry, we need to open the public hearing at this moment. Thank you, Commissioner Caneley. Do we have anybody that would like to speak at the public hearing? All right, at this time, could I hear from the applicant? Please sign in with your name, number, and address, and state that for the record, or your name and address.
My name is Garrett Duncan. I'm here on the behalf of the developer. So, 600 West 64th Street and 6345 Lindale Avenue, so. Just wanted to mention that I was here to answer any questions, if you guys have them.
My first question would be, what is your intention with the property? I'm not sure if I've seen this precedent set for splitting properties as part of a planned unit development. Having drove by the property, I see they are maintained quite differently.
Yeah, the intention is really just to be able to separate them, to get them on separate mortgages. They will qualify for different mortgages, just kind of based off of the housing type that they are. We, with the Richland, the smaller building, being a Noah building, it would qualify for different mortgages than the larger building would, where it kind of has a lot more green features, so it would, it would be applicable to green mortgages, so that would open up more options for us when looking to refinance.
Do you have any intention of selling one of them in the next year?
No, not at this time.
Okay. But you potentially could?
In the future, yeah. I mean, right now, we're not, it's not on the market, we're not looking to put it on the market, it's just, we're looking to refinance now that we're out of the construction loan, and we've finished the building.
Anybody else have any questions for the developer? I do have a question on your lack of maintenance on one property versus the other. You know, I know grass and things like that are difficult to maintain this year, but, you know, your one property to, the newer of the two, seems to be very well kept up, whereas the other one isn't.
We do have the same lawn and snow vendor for both parcels. Obviously, with the reconstruction of one building, new landscaping was put in, irrigation was put in there as well, which kind of helps just keep that looking greener, looking more fresh. But yeah, when we have one person come out to mow the lawn or maintain the lot, maybe both lots at that time. I guess I don't know specifically what you may be referring to.
Well, I'm referring to one that's full of weeds and burnt up and dead versus one that's nice and lush and green, you know, it really looks like you're maintaining them, you know, excuse the term, but the poor door is being treated as a poor door.
Sure, and I think a lot of that there would maybe just be attributed to the lack of irrigation on that site.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Anybody else would like to speak at, anybody else have any questions, or at this point, if they don't, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if there's no one else here to speak regarding this from the public, I move that we close the public hearing.
All right, at this point, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Caneley seconds.
All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The public hearing is not closed. Do we have any questions for staff? We're now at our point of discussion. Well, I've got a couple things to say. I was on the Planning Commission at the time this came through, the Planning Commission, and if I remember correctly, it was, there was a lot of grand plans to make sure that this was part of the development, one for numbers. They wanted to maintain their affordability. There's 22 apartments in this building, and I'm not sure, if I remember correctly, how many affordable were going to be part of the new development. I know the numbers weren't nearly what is currently in the older unit. There was a lot of work and words being said about, you know, the entrance being upgraded, upgraded windows, you know, landscaping sidewalks, exterior lighting, you know, I was over to this development earlier this afternoon, you know, I really didn't look at things until this morning, but, you know, it jogged my memory when I was on the Planning Commission, and, you know, I was seriously appalled, you know, you look at the old pictures of the property with the nice green grass, and even the development was maintained fairly well then. So, you know, it doesn't look, you can really tell the difference between how it's maintained now. And my fear is, you know, we allow this, we're setting precedent for split, you know, for companies to come in, create planned unit developments with the city, and have these grand plans to help out affordable housing in our neighborhood. And then they'll split it like this, and then later down the road, they'll abandon it. And rightfully so, at that point, they can, because they have no skin in the game, because they can sell the property. I think this would set a precedent like that, where, you know, the next would be in line, would be Chamberlain, where, you know, we save a bunch of affordable housing in this city, and before you know it, affordable housing is down the tubes in this city by allowing something like this, or recommending something like this to go through. That's where I see it, because, you know, we've really looked at this development and this property as, you know, one. And now for it to be proposed to split this apart for mortgage reasons, I think that's just the future sign of what's going to happen next, and that's my opinion. Anybody else have any comments?
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yeah.
Question to city staff, is by permitting this subdivision, or this new plat, is there any changes in enforcement to how properties are maintained?
Chair and Commissioner Sturza, no, no, there's not.
So, I am a little unclear how the concerns that you have for this site are being impacted by our vote here tonight. I think I certainly support naturally occurring affordable housing. I want to see it succeed. I also don't see how, if we support this motion tonight, how that somehow jeopardizes the building in the ways that you seem to suggest it might.
So, when this development was brought forward to us, it was brought forward to us as one project, and now we're looking at, it was, which is, how it ended up becoming a planned unit development? There was things that had to be met, and now we're opening the door to splitting this up by changing the plat of what was requested a little bit over two years ago.
Commissioner Rudolph, just one more follow-up question to city staff. If, does this open the door to future changes in ways that the current approvals, let me rephrase that question, by splitting these two developments, are you, are we opening ourselves up to grandfathering in anything? It seems to me that the next proposal, if there is one, would have to be proposed as a planned unit development, which means that nothing is a right, by right. Am I understanding that correctly?
Chair and Commissioner Sturza, I don't think I could say off the top of my head what could be built there by right or not. However, they have put a lot of money into the affordable building, which then makes it not a candidate for teardown anymore. It's, it's more likely to ensure the longevity of that naturally affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing, even if they didn't own it anymore in the future. I believe that they did this without any, and you can correct, I haven't been here long enough, and I don't remember from reading the files, so maybe the applicant could clarify, but I believe they did that without any city assistance. I don't think we gave tiff for this project. I don't recall, because I wasn't here at the time, but the short answer to your question is, any redevelopment they would need to do would likely need to come before the Planning Commission and the city council for approval.
Mr. Chair, just a question, once again to clarify, to Mr. Chair, just a question, once again to clarify to city staff, should this division of the plot be approved? There would be no change in the current zoning conditions or use of the property as it is now. Tomorrow, nothing would change, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. It seems to me, Commissioners, that this is a pretty technical, ministerial thing that isn't really a policy setting or precedent, so I would encourage us to approve this and move forward.
Commissioner Hui.
Thank you. Question for staff. Is there anything, say they were to sell it tomorrow, is there anything that the new owner could do with the property that the current owner can't currently do right now, with or without subdividing the plat?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so there's no planned unit development structure holding, like, specific requirements or anything together?
Right. My understanding of the situation is that in a new owner's hands, all the same possibilities could happen in this owner's hands.
My question will be, if we split this plat, the parking lot, would that, and if a new owner decided to, you know, they wanted to, you can't use those three feet of my parking lot, would that lot be sufficient in size to accommodate that apartment building by itself?
Chair and Commissioners, the way that the line runs through the parking lot, it would, the arrangement has to stay in place, or they would have to need to find alternative parking solution.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the three resolutions as presented by city staff for a preliminary plat and final plat, approving the amended planning development, and approval of a resolution vacating the existing drainage and utility easements.
Commissioner Caneley, seconds.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. No. The proposal passes. The next thing on our agenda is the election of Planning Commission Vice Chairperson. Staff?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. In accordance with the Planning Commission bylaws, the resignation or retirement of an officer of the Planning Commission shall require that the commission elect a new officer at the next regular meeting. Commissioner Quam, who previously served as Vice Chairperson, resigned following the August 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Therefore, we're looking for a vote to occur to elect a new vice chair.
Do we have anybody that would like to nominate somebody?
Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Sturza.
I think, I think that's helpful to know, to be recognized, just FYI. I would like to nominate Commissioner Caneley. I think he would do an excellent job. He has served as secretary very thoroughly and responsibly, and I think that just the tone that he brings to the commission, and the respect, and the dialogue, I've very much appreciated, so I would nominate Commissioner Caneley.
All right. Commissioner Caneley?
Thank you. I would be happy and honored to serve as vice chair.
Do we have any other nominations? All right, Commissioner Caneley, looks like you are vice chair.
Should I make a motion to do that?
Or not, actually.
They're recommending.
I don't think we did. Do we?
I'm going to make a motion. I would like to make a motion.
Sorry to tell you, but the pay does not go up much.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Caneley to vice.
Commissioner Serma, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. So at this time, since Commissioner Caneley is vice chair, and he would be vacating secretary spot, do I think it would be appropriate at this time to nominate a new secretary?
Mr. Chair, I believe according to the, according to our bylaws, we would do the election at the meeting after the vacancy occurs. So, you know, he serves as secretary through the end of meeting today, and we would go to the next meeting. Am I correct, Steph?
We can do it that way?
That is correct.
All right. Liaison reports, community services. Oh, yeah, I guess I missed something. Consider a motion to reschedule the December Planning Commission meeting to December 12th, 2022. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Rudolph. The regularly scheduled December Planning Commission meeting falls on Monday, December 26th, 2022. The Planning Commission has typically rescheduled this meeting to avoid the holiday and winter break time period. Staff recommends rescheduling the meeting to the second Monday of the month, which is December 12th, as has been custom for several years. So, staff can answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Commissioner Hui?
Can we do that perpetually? Or should we address this every year?
It must be addressed every year because of the bylaws state when our meetings will normally happen.
Okay, sounds good.
And as a matter of note, I think we've, for the five years I've been on the planning commission, it's been rescheduled every year, so.
Just trying to save us some time.
The precedence has already been set. Do we have any discussion on this? All right, do we have a motion?
I motion that we move the December planning meeting to December 12th.
I will second that.
I second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the next thing we do have on our, is the liaison reports. Community Services Advisory Commission, I've got no report. City Council?
I reviewed their agenda from their September 13th meeting. They considered an emergency preparedness agreement with Bloomington, the city of Bloomington, updates to several ordinances, the purchase of snow equipment. They're working on budgets again, and they are also discussing how to allocate ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds, locally.
HRA?
If you've been down Penn, you've probably noticed that Bumper to Bumper Building has finally been demolished. HRA owns that site, and there's been talk of a proposal that hasn't been, hasn't come to fruition yet, but it sounds like in 2023, they're expecting some sort of activity on that, but for now, the lighted building is demolished.
Richfield School Board?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the Richfields School Board met twice this month. They, a lot of logistical planning because of the beginning of the year, discussion of COVID protocols, the current status in Hennepin County of COVID, approval of staff hiring, and then the really only, there was not a lot of policy discussion, other than the closed session for labor negotiations and a revision to the drug policy that bans cannabis derivatives. It adds that as a separate line in the drug-free policy, but no other policy implications.
Transportation Commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the Transportation Commission met earlier this month. They discussed a pilot project that's going to be taking place, can't remember the exact timeline, but in the near future, for pedestrian safety improvements around the STEM school and that associated campus, as well as a project that'll be taking place in 2023 at the intersection of 77th and Lyndale. That project will replace the traffic signal system at that intersection and make a few other associated adjustments to that intersection. Those are the main things discussed.
All right, Chamber of Commerce?
This was the first month I was assigned liaisonship, and the meeting had already occurred by the time that we connected, so I'll be attending the next one, which is first Tuesday of the month.
Do we have anybody on Sustainability Commission?
Yes, Chair. The report on organized collection was positive. Residents will be receiving informational inserts on wind energy in their utility bills. There is a community garden in the works for Vets Park to be complete by Mother's Day 2023. The city has also responded to public feedback at Augsburg Park regarding the pollinator gardens. They've removed some plants and replaced them with others that are native. And finally, new trees are at Donaldson and Christian Parks.
Fantastic. The one thing that we didn't talk about was there was a community event, a bit more than wiki, I'm not sure how many people got the chance to get out to attend Penn Fest. I was there, helping out with Richfield Curling, but I got to walk around, and it was incredible, having been at this event since probably as close to its inception. How many people were there this year? I think the amount of people, probably pretty close to our record. It was pretty well-packed, which was really good to see since, you know, it hasn't been, we had COVID years, you know, and the event and things like that. It was really fun, though. So the next thing we have is our city planners' report.
Chair and Commissioners, the September 13th city council meeting, the council voted to approve the text amendment to the fence ordinance with the change that six-foot-tall fences only need to be set back three feet rather than six feet from the corner side property line, when in the rear yard. I also wanted to mention, since we are short of one commissioner, the city is accepting applications for all boards from October 1st through October 31st. Thank you.
All right, and.
So is it anticipated that the spot on this commission is going to be open until they, until they close then, so?
That's correct, yeah.
Question as well?
Yes, Commissioner Serma.
Thank you. So I know in the past, the city board and commission application period was in December. Has that been changed to, you said October, has that been changed?
I believe it has been shifted forward, yes.
Okay.
I think it's to align better with training and onboarding schedules.
Okay, so it's the regular yearly process, just a little earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And the next thing we have is our regular meeting is on October 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Last thing is, we have an adjournment. Do we have any, do we have a motion?
Commissioner Hui, you have motions to adjourn?
We have a second.
Commissioner Caneley, seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I'll see you guys next month.